I want to welcome everyone to the February 24th City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone home and everyone here. I want to start out the meeting by letting people know that the city manager will be coming with his proposals for the rest stop on, at our Wednesday meeting, and that will be first up. And depending on how long that discussion is, may in fact, I'm looking back to Lisa back there, may in fact impact the time for the integrated pest management discussion on Wednesday, depending on how much time the rest stop. Just letting, just wanting everybody to have full knowledge of what they might have to be shifting around about.
I want to talk about bees.
Okay. City manager, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No ma'am.
Okay. So, we're ready for the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if you know it. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I'm going to open the public forum, and we have seventeen people signed up. First up is Gordon Levitt, followed by Meg Ward. Welcome.
See if the mic's working here. Good evening, councilors. My name's Gordon Levitt. I'm twenty-four years old, and I'm a current resident of Ward Three.
Speak right up, because we're not very even.
As a second-year-long conflict resolution student and a law clerk for Our Children's Trust, I want to thank the council for holding a work session to discuss the climate recovery ordinance on March tenth. When I first witnessed melting glaciers and became concerned about climate change more than a decade ago...
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You really do have to, I don't know how you're going to have to arrange the...
Okay, sorry. Is that better now?
Get really close with that mic.
Okay. I struggled to comprehend how we could so drastically change our planet and what I could do to help reverse these changes. In recent years, I've strived to better understand all dimensions of climate change, finding that I feel most empowered when I'm working to empower others. As a law clerk for Our Children's Trust, I'm working to help empower youth around the world to voice their concerns about climate change to adult decision-makers, including this body. It is crucially important that today's youth know their ability to create change and to engage in the democratic process. They are the future. Youth in our campaign and Our Children's Trust are committed to advocating for the best possible policies for Eugene. Last week at the Sustainability Commission meeting, I enjoyed hearing the commissioner's comments on the climate recovery ordinance and look forward to incorporating these suggestions into a future draft of the ordinance. Our Children's Trust also would like to meet individually with each of you to discuss the ordinance and how it can best be tailored to fit the current and future needs of our city. Also, as a conference co-director for this year's Public Interest Environmental Law Conference, I strongly encourage you to attend a number of keynote presentations during the conference. This Friday, the former administrator of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, Dr. Jane Luchenko, as well as Vermont Law Professor Patrick Parento, will be discussing the intersection between science, law, and policy with a focus on climate change. All of you were also invited to attend a reception this Saturday morning with world-renowned climate scientist James Hansen. I hope that you can make it, but if you cannot, he'll be speaking this Saturday at 7:00 PM in the EMU ballroom at the University of Oregon. He'll be discussing the latest climate science and what this data means for policymakers. His keynote address will be followed by a speech by University of Oregon Law Professor Mary Wood, whose most recent book, Nature's Trust, proposes a new system of environmental laws to fit our changing planetary circumstances. Thank you for your consideration of these events. I'm looking forward to the work session on March tenth, and I encourage you to continue discussing this issue in the months ahead. Thank you.
You. Next up is Meg Ward, followed by Julia Olson.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Meg Ward. I'm twenty-six years old, and I recently moved to San Francisco, California, although I grew up in Oregon and was born here. After graduating with an environmental studies degree from the University of Oregon in 2010, I joined Our Children's Trust as a communications and outreach coordinator, with youth engagement being a primary focus of my work. Over the past three years, I've worked with incredible pro bono attorneys, top climate scientists, youth partners, human rights organizations, law students, and filmmakers who've captured the stories, captures the stories of youth across the country who've been affected by the impacts of climate change. But the most important people I work with are the youth. I'm constantly inspired by their eagerness to share their stories and to take bold action with the hope that their leaders will listen and make moves to protect their futures. I've witnessed Nelson Canuck from the small village of Kipnuk, Alaska, make his first trip outside of the state of Alaska to Eugene, Oregon, to give a keynote presentation at the Public Interest Environmental Law Conference two years ago to educate the public about the dire challenges he and his family face in their part of the world due to climate change. I've witnessed Kelsey Juliana, a high school senior in Eugene, speak to and inspire over two-hundred-and-fifty elementary and middle school students at the Wild and Scenic Film Festival in Nevada City. And I've witnessed Eugene youth come here to this very room to talk to you all about climate change and what it means to them, and why they hope you will take action on the climate change ordinance. These opportunities empower the youth and inspire them to make positive change. There are countless youth like Nelson and Kelsey from around the country who seek us out to help them elevate their voice. As you go into this next work session on March tenth, I hope that you consider your youngest constituents and future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julia Olson is next, followed by Deb Frisch.
Good evening. I'm Julia Olson. I'm a Eugene resident, and I live in Betty Taylor's Ward. And I wanted to reflect on just a couple of quick things. One, I think as individuals, it's hard for us to live our lives in a way that is protective of future generations and to know exactly what that means and how to do that. And I think it's one really important reason why we have government, so that you all can help us as individuals and as a community know what it means to make sure that we're leading lives that are protective of our kids' futures and our air and our water resources. And I know that you all dedicate your time freely as city councilors to do that on behalf of our community, and I'm grateful for that, and I think it's a really important role that you all take on. And you are serving not just those who are living today, the adults in our community, but you're serving future generations by the decisions that you make. And hopefully, one of those decisions this spring will be to commit to the goals that you have stated for reducing emissions in our community and in city government. One of the things that I haven't mentioned, I don't think, in my time speaking before you is that we're producing a mini-documentary film about this effort that young people are taking in Eugene, and our hope is to share it with kids and organizations and government leaders in other communities. And I really hope that the film that we're producing will end with Eugene City Council taking action on this proposed ordinance. And as Gordon Levitt said, we would really love to work with each of you to hear your concerns about the language in the proposed ordinance, work to redraft, craft something that works for all of you that can really make a difference for Eugene and be a model for other communities. So, thank you.
Next up is Deb Frisch, followed by Sue Serralupi.
Deb Frisch, I live outside, I live in Eugene, outside the city limits. I'm here tonight to offer encouragement to the thousands of Eugene residents who are not just disappointed in the decision to purchase Civic Stadium, but who are also offended by the process. Many parties, including several seated at the podium, engaged in a brutal campaign of propaganda, disinformation, and bullying. The biggest offender, of course, is the register guard. Dozens of editorials, op-ed columns, and letters to the editor lobbied relentlessly for the preservation of the stadium. Even front-page articles were thinly disguised propaganda for the preservation of the stadium. Alton F. Baker III missed the day in journalism school when they learned the purpose of a newspaper is to report the news, not determine it. The register guard has now started a propaganda campaign suggesting that opponents should be good losers and not take action to communicate their disgust about the biased process. I disagree. There are two ways the preservation attempt can be thwarted. If $3 million can't be raised, Civic Stadium is history. People should keep track of the businesses that donate to the renovation fund and boycott those businesses. Another way the city's offer can fall through is if Superintendent Berman and city manager Reese can't come to an agreement about the terms of the contract. The day after the Four J School Board accepted the city's proposal, the register guard listed five conditions demanded by Dr. Berman. The most outrageous is that Four J will share in the profits if the city sells the property for more than the $4 million purchase price. This is absurd. First of all, if the proposal goes through, it will be a $7.5 million investment. Second, the arrogance of Dr. Berman is breathtaking. If Fred Meyer had won the competition and invested $30 million in the site, would Dr. Berman have asked them to share in any profits over the $4.5 million purchase price? I'm pretty sure most Eugene residents would not purchase a house if a condition was that the sellers would share in any profits. I urge people to email city manager Reese and CC the city council expressing their outrage if the city accepts this bizarre condition. The register guard cleverly waited until weeks after the city council voted to publish these bizarre conditions. If they'd been made public earlier, I suspect many Eugene residents would have expressed outrage to the councilors, and the vote might have been different. People happy with the decision argued that the game is over and it's time to move on. But this is false. We're only done with the first inning. The next eight innings will be played out over the next six months. Let's play ball, and may the best team win.
Next up is Sue Serralupi, followed by Jerry Smith.
Hi, can you hear me?
Not very well.
Oh. I'm so tall.
Speak up as much as you can.
Is this better?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Just hold it up to your mouth.
Oh, just like a rock star. Okay.
There you go.
All right. My name is Sue Serralupi, and I'm in Ward One. Thank you, George, for your service. And I also wanted to thank Councilmember Evans and Brown and Mayor Piercy for joining us at the Whoville Open House. It was such a delight, and I'm sure we'll have another one, we'll see the rest of you there. It was a beautiful day, and you'll all enjoy it when you come again. I also wanted to thank you all for your continued support of Occupy Medical. We have been in service for two years, and what was predicted was that when the ACA came into existence, that Occupy Medical would probably disappear. What we are seeing instead is that we are getting more patients. It's a little interesting phenomenon. None of us were really expecting it. But what is happening is that our patients, although they do have better access to prescriptions and can refill their prescriptions, they do not have better access to doctors. I had mentioned before that in Lane County, we are losing more doctors simply by attrition and aging out. A minimum of twenty percent of our nurse practitioners and doctors will be lost this year alone, and that's a minimum. That is a reality that Occupy Medical is trying to help with by offering free care to all. We are seeing the population increase, and the severity of the conditions that we are treating also increase. I have to warn you that I did send you an email that has very graphic images, and I apologize if any of those images shock you. The thing to keep in mind, however, is that was a frostbite victim I mentioned that last time I was here, and that is improved condition after two months of treatment for this patient. For our unhoused, their medical conditions are very severe, and they're specific to lack of shelter. For our housed, the people that are coming to us are coming to us because they've been neglected, and they cannot find a way to find service. So again, I appreciate your support, and I look forward to more support from you, and we will do everything we can to serve this community with whatever resources we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Smith is next, followed by Michael Carrigan.
I'm Jerry Smith. I live in Betty Taylor's district. I'm a retired social worker and volunteer at First Christian Church and our many homeless programs. I see homelessness growing and getting, the conditions of homelessness getting more severe, and I urge more camp spaces for the homeless, more cover and shelter, any way we can get it. The reduction at the mission in terms of nightly intakes, the reduction of our Tea Party-led county mental health is just bizarre. I've been getting more and more cases coming to church during the day. When you look at these people and you literally say, "There is no help for them." Today, a young man came in, grew up in Lane County, in special ed classes. He was born addicted to crack and amphetamines. His mental health has never much improved. I was so concerned for him today because he'd gone days without sleep and then days, when he came in today, he had five days where he'd been asleep, five straight days. So I called Lane County Mental Health, and I said, "Can I bring him over? When is your intake time?" The response was, "We don't do intake anymore. The only way you can get intake here is to make a telephone call, and they won't give you a time on the telephone call. They will call you back sometime at your number in the next two working days." There's no way to get a homeless person into our mental health system. We've got more mentally ill people in bizarre conditions of no care in our homeless population. Something has really got to be done. And the reason I go at it being about Tea Party being the problem, you know, when you cut back on county government by ending services to the mentally ill, the only money you're saving is the money for the people who are the problem, the big contractors, the corporations, the super-rich, who we keep giving tax incentives. We keep telling them, "They don't have to pay taxes." "Oh, we don't need your money, you know? We'll tax the middle class."
Thank you. Michael Carrigan is next, followed by Azra Khalidi.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I'm the shelter rights organizer for Community Alliance of Lane County, and I live in Ward Seven. We at CALC want to thank the mayor, council, city manager, deputy chief of special operations, Joe Zaludick, and EPD Lieutenant Eric Clinco for their ongoing commitment and efforts to find an appropriate long-term site for the residents of Whoville. As you know, the recently formed Whoville Coalition combines the experience and energies homeless individuals, activists, and local service providers to assure the successful relocation and operation of Whoville. Once this crisis is resolved, this group plans to address other challenges facing the unhoused in our community. This group has already met twice regarding the Whoville crisis. As a result, Eagan volunteers have offered to help with the upcoming Whoville move to transport belongings and the help with the site cleanup at Broadway and Hilliard. Opportunity Village has offered to help with the infrastructure at the new site, and some of the social service providers have already provided services for some of the current Whovillers. Also arising from the coalition is the Whoville Executive Council, of which I am a member. Has been formed, entered into an agreement with the city to provide oversight of the new location. I'll be serving on this executive council along with two lawyers, a retired pastor, three people with experiences and training skills in peacekeeping, negotiation, and de-escalation, a night manager of an Eagan warming center, a member from the faith community, along with several Whoville leaders. Also, we have contacted county representatives and gone to Salem and met with state officials. Of that group, Representative Val Hoyle and Philip Barnhart have agreed to participate in a town hall meeting here in Eugene on finding practical ways to help the unhoused not just survive, but thrive here in Lane County. On Wednesday, we're meeting with four key people at the University of Oregon, the president's chief of staff, the assistant vice president for academic affairs, the senior director of community relations, and the dean of the law school. CALC and the new coalition are committed to advocating for the joining of federal, state, county, city, and nonprofit and grassroots efforts in addressing homelessness. We're also working tirelessly to educate the community, to effect positive changes and attitudes that will enable this council to continue to help develop and approve innovative programs like Opportunity Village and the rest stops. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Azra Khalidi is next, followed by Bob Brown.
Honorable city mayor and the council...
Just hold it up to your mouth, it'll be fine. Just pick it up, Azra.
Pick up the whole thing.
Pick up the whole thing, yeah.
Honorable city manager and honorable city mayor and the council. I am Azra Khalidi and live at 4023 Donald Street in Eugene. I'm here tonight to request you to put three traffic lights. All these three crossings are very busy all the time, especially during busy hours in the morning and evening. So the first one is at East Broadway and Patterson. At this crossing, there is a continuous flow of students on foot and on bicycles, and the customers from 7-Eleven, five restaurants, and three motels within two blocks, and traffic flow between downtown and Franklin Boulevard is heavy. The second and third traffic light should be installed in South Eugene. The second light I'm talking about is at the four-way crossings on East Fortieth and Donald Street, and the third light to be installed at the Forty-third and Donald Street, which is close to Spencer Butte Middle School. These two crossings are holding traffic from Edgewood Shopping Mall. Its parking lot has almost fifty vehicles all the time and large commercial trucks parked in the back alley. They use Donald Street also. The trucks supply food and beverages to businesses in Edgewood Shopping Mall. I have also observed runners running under the awnings in bad weather. These two crossings in South Eugene are not only busy in busy hours in daytime, but also in evenings, especially on Friday and Saturday nights past midnight, when the drunks from Highland Pub and Sports Tavern drive out on Donald Street. And of course, there are some cabs as well in the same parking lot to pick up drunk customers from Tavern. I have one more request, to build a skateboard arena in the Tubman Park on Thirty-Sixth and Hilliard Street. Kids with a skateboard keep on walking up and down on Donald and Fortieth Street, and whenever they get chance, they skate on both streets, which has more than or about fifteen percent slope. A few years ago, these kids used to skate in front of businesses and hang around a fountain in front of Safeway. When Safeway stopped them from loitering and skateboarding, kids put so much bubble bath in the fountain that Safeway struggled for almost two days to get rid of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Brown is next, followed by Brenda Brinard. Brinard.
Hello? Hello, Tom, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, cool. Hi, my name is Bob Brown. I live in the West Eugene neighborhood. I think that's Randy Zlinka, if I'm correct, I don't know. I don't know. Whoville. So, in the time that I've spent with the folks at Whoville, what becomes apparent to me is that there are two groups of individuals who have potential with a little bit of capacity building, a little bit of support from community, to be kind of on the front lines of working with wet folks, you know, folks that are using. It's a very difficult job, and a lot of these folks burn out. But I think some of those folks are here tonight, and I think a lot of the council and some of the other members of our city leadership have identified some of these people. If I was to make a request, my request would be that no matter what decision is made by the leadership of our community, that we continue to support those individuals who have that potential with a little bit of capacity building to be of service to the community. We don't have a lot of assets. We have shrinking resources. Peer-to-peer interventions may be a way of going. All we have to do is show these people some dignity, give them a chance, okay? We're not, there's no real big risk there. Aside from that, today I was reading about this man named Chris Hughes. He was a lieutenant colonel in Iraq, and he took his men into some town called Nafraz, or anyway, the main Shia temple. And it was very famous where he went in and the crowd was coming, and they were having this conflict, and he had everybody kneel down. For me, that represented a leadership that is just like, you know, when I was in the military, in my experience, had I met people like that, and I did, I'm completely willing to follow those people. That kind of courage and leadership is something that I admire. And I think I risk for that in Eugene, to see that kind of leadership where we have people who are willing to show some courage in the face of these contentious issues and be willing to sit down and counsel. These men kneeled down, the Iraqi people kneeled down, they sat down together, they smiled at each other, diffused a very tense situation. If we could do that, this council is fine, but I'm talking about another kind of council, where we sit together in community and talk about things, where we have the courage to meet face-to-face and really engage in dialogue, not just two minutes. You know, this is fine, but this is a different thing. So I would encourage that and wish for that, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Brenda Brinard is next, followed by Kelsey Moore.
Good evening to the councilors. I apologize if my remarks about this topic are not timely.
You can introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I am Brenda Brinard. I'm not going to give my age. I live in the North Coburg area. I apologize if my remarks aren't timely. I teach a class at the Four J School District every second and fourth Monday evenings, and so I found someone to take my class tonight because I thought and thought about this issue regarding the fireworks and how the city is acting up on it. I feel desperately sorry for the individual whose house was burned down last year at fireworks. It was just a few blocks north of me. But what I want the city council to realize is that those individuals who led off those illegal fireworks at Cal Young Middle School had been doing it probably for four to five to six years. For the last ten years in my cul-de-sac, all of our neighbors have gathered, we've got out our fire hoses and our buckets, and we've had a wonderful evening of legal fireworks. Just north of us is Cal Young Middle School, where for the past many years, illegal fireworks have been shot off. Last year, the Eugene Police Department drove by, saw the illegal fireworks going off, and took their sirens and went, "Whoop, whoop, whoop, whoop," and drove away. You worry and worry about taking away legal fireworks, but here would have been a perfect opportunity to take care of illegal fireworks. Those fireworks have had phone calls by numerous neighbors to the city of Eugene in the last many, many years, none of which have been responded to. It has become a bad habit in my neighborhood. I realize that the fireworks before and after the Fourth of July are disruptive, they're unnecessary, and they are also illegal. But please don't use an excuse where illegal fireworks were failed to be responded to as a means of taking away legal fireworks that families do in various neighborhoods. I appreciated the opportunity to read about fireworks on the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve, but what was failed to address was all the fireworks that go off in response to the U of O games. If we're going to be ridiculously overbearing about one or two holidays, let's make sure we include the Sacrosanct Duck Games, in which fireworks are shot off repeatedly in many neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Kelsey Moore is next, followed by Mark Rubenowitz.
Hey, everyone. My name is Kelsey Moore, and my ward is the Whitaker. And I'm here today to talk about Willamette Street. And... He also spoke about, don't do it in the next twenty years, do it in the next two to five years. Improve safety, improve mobility, improve the whole transportation system for everyone. And he talks about the right to individual mobility for people, you know, eight to eighty. That's the name of his organization, Eight to Eighty. So just the, you know, when you think about it, until you're sixteen, you don't really have the right to individual mobility, so you're either going to be walking, biking, or taking transit, or driving with someone who's driving you. Same once you reach a certain age, you know, eighties and up perhaps. So it really resonated well with me. I'm also here to talk about businesses on Willamette Street and how we feel about redesign on the five blocks that are under question on what design might go in. Basically, having a center turn lane would benefit every single business from Twenty-Fourth to Thirty-fifth. Right now, when cars stop to make a left-hand turn into any business along that route, they are stopped in one of the middle lanes and stopping traffic behind them. It's not easy. You're taking a turn across two lanes and trying to look for pedestrians and cyclists on the sidewalk at the same time. The current street doesn't benefit businesses, it doesn't benefit business access, and a redesign really could. It would create a sense of place, a better, a better place to park your car and walk to a neighboring business and explore. I'm really, really excited to see what we can do with Willamette Street, and like I said, all of Eugene. It's not just about Willamette Street, it's about our whole transportation system, and I know you guys all live in different wards and know places that could be improved, and I'm on Willamette Street working every day. So thank you so much for your time and attention, and I'm going to, in the near future, hopefully, walk each one of you down Willamette Street, if you'd be willing to. A couple of you already have, and I really appreciate the time. I also have these books that Mark Schlossberg wrote. He's a professor in the Public Policy Planning Department at the University of Oregon. I know several of you do have these books, but anyone who doesn't, I would like to give you one today. This book is a really fantastic example of what other cities are doing. It shows redesigns in cities all across the states. It's not apples-to-apples, but it shows you what has happened and the statistics along with those designs, so I invite you to look through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Robenowitz is next, followed by David Nelken.
I'm Mark Robenowitz, and I have some suggested changes to your proposed resolution about the trust, so-called. Like a lot of environmental initiatives, it has good values, which I agree with, but mathematics that don't add up or subtract. The city says we need to reduce our carbon footprint ten percent by the next decade, yet there is no mention, either in this resolution or in city literature, that energy peaked in the previous decade. We're using about ten percent less electricity, both in Eugene, Oregon, and the United States. And natural gas from conventional wells peaked, coal has peaked, pretty much everything has peaked except in Nile. The city also says we need to cut our energy consumption in half by 2030. We will be lucky to even have half of our energy to consume in 2030. Last week, the Elyeska Pipeline, Trans-Alaska Pipeline, put out their 2013 figures. They dropped another two and a half percent last year. It's an inexorable decline. There was only so much oil that was put in the ground, and ninety percent of what was found has already been drilled and burned. If you drive a car, if you ride LTD, if you go on a bus from city to city, you fly a plane, or eat food that comes in a food delivery truck, you are dependent on the Alaska Pipeline. The Alaska Pipeline is about as wide as this table, and it takes a half a million barrels a day to keep it from freezing in the Arctic winter. It's now down to five hundred thirty-seven thousand barrels. If the city really wants to reduce our carbon footprint, we need some practicalities. Cancel the eleven-lane widening of Beltline. Cancel further widening of Interstate Five. They're not going to be needed on the downslope. You could mention that clearcutting and deforestation is part of the climate crisis. We've known since the logging of the Cedars of Lebanon thousands of years ago that cutting down forests creates deserts. We are getting a small example of that this year, especially if you like to eat food from California. Cancel the plan for the city to be carbon neutral. News flash: Solar panels don't sequester carbon. I've used solar panels for almost twenty-four years now. They're great. They do not sequester carbon. They're good, we should put up as many as we can, but they're not going to replace concentrated fossil fuels. And finally, David Holmgren, co-founder of Permaculture, who came through Eugene nine years ago, put out a report in December talking about where we are on the downslope, and he said, "The dip in global emissions created by the 2008 global financial crisis was ignored by the climate activist community as an inconvenient truth."
Thank you. David Nelken is next, followed by, it looks like, Catherine LeVere.
I'd like to give these to the city manager. These are some crash statistics for Willamette Street that you can peruse. There are some news stats for you. Good evening. My name is David Nelken, and I live, and I work at 2472 Willamette Street. Good evening, city councilors, Mayor Piercy, City Manager Ruiz. There's some good news on the recent crash statistics for Willamette Street, in that 2011, 2012, there was, there were only a total of thirty-three crashes, which is the lowest of any two-year period from 2008 to date. So the sky is not falling, and we are at an improved level of crashes for the street. If we eliminate the crashes that occur at the intersection of Twenty-Ninth and Willamette, the crash statistics drop dramatically. For 2009, they would drop sixty-one percent. 2010, thirty-one percent. 2011, thirty-five percent. And 2012, thirty-one percent. The danger on the street is concentrated at Twenty-Ninth and Willamette. If we deduct this stretch or intersection, the crash stats fall for 2009 to 2011 to two-point-eight for crashes per million miles traveled, and for 2010 to 2012 to three-point-one-three crashes per million miles traveled, well within or close to the state average of two-point-nine million crashes per mile. So let us focus our attention on the speed through the corridor. If we can stagger the timing of the lights on the street, then we can slow motorists down. We do not need a bike lane, as we are told by the city engineers, to achieve this. Crash stats tell us that the street is currently safe, and that Twenty-Ninth and Willamette intersection needs improvement. Let us put our bike-riding friends on Portland and Oak Street and Amazon Parkway out of harm's way, and not compromise our first responders and our citizen public safety, and make the street work for the greatest number and the greatest good of Eugene. The stats that I've given you will correspond to what I've read tonight, and if you sit at home and are bored and have a calculator out, you can figure all this stuff yourself. You'll see that we're on the downward decline, and I think that the street is, is in great shape, and that it is a productive and good street, and we need to keep it just the way it is. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So Catherine LeVere or Catherine Levine, one of the two. I think it's Levine. I'm going to make a bet on that.
Hi. Oops. Is that going to work?
They both work. Where you're comfortable.
All right, sorry. Hi. This is my first city council meeting ever. I'm Catherine Levine, the owner of Holy Cow Foods. So I don't have any notes because I left my glasses behind, so I get to do one of those extemporaneous speeches and just say what my heart speaks. So first off, I want to really thank everyone for all their service, because it really takes a lot to serve our community, and it's a very special community. I don't think it's a cookie-cutter community like every other place on the planet. I think we have a lot of very talented people here for the amount of people we have, and we get, tend to get very good results out of it, if not a little contentious and difficult. I think we, you know, once we work through things, excuse me, once we work through things, I think we can come to some good results, synergistic results that are better than the sum of our parts. So I am an owner of a business on Willamette Street, Holy Cow. We've been there three years now. I like to say I raised my kids on Willamette. I sort of, schools were all between all parts of that street, and that was the street I drove a lot. And having now seen that street up close and personal for three years with our café there, it's a mess. It is not safe. It is not human, and it's not the streets of the future. I think we have an opportunity here to do something better, and I would be very disappointed if we end up with exactly what it is now, because it's some sort of anomaly, and it bespeaks a time that is behind us, and none of us sitting here know what the future is going to be like. But that's the kind of result that we're looking for, is something that we don't know quite yet, what that future is going to be like, how the patterns will change. I have children in their twenties. There's one car among the four of them, you know, not my own kid, my kids and their girlfriends and whatnot. So the, the usage of cars is down, and people want a city where you can walk it and drive it, and it's more human, and it's a different scale. And Eugene has that in its heart and in its roots. It's not a fake down. It wasn't just put here by a bunch of corporations. It's a town that has roots based on the city, based on the trees, I mean, the river is what I meant to say, and that's how the city came out. And I think if we keep that in mind and try to keep it at a human level, we can come up with something better, whether it's bikes or whether it's, you know, whatever. I think it needs to slow down, and I think it needs a turning lane, and I think that that will really make things better. They just redid the streets in my neighborhood on Augusta, and they didn't put any lines down the middle of the street. And I said to somebody in the city who I had a chance to say something to, that I really liked it like that. Could they leave it like that? Because people are slower because they have to negotiate it. And they go, "That's the plan." So let's plan something great for Willamette. Thank you very much.
Jean Stacey is next, followed by Carol Seaton.
I hope this is going to work. It sounds okay. My name is Carol Seaton. I live at 1150 West Fifteenth Street, next to the fairgrounds. I have information that I would like to give, and what, do you leave it on that desk? Okay. There were many very serious problems talked about tonight, and mine's a kind of a minor one, but maybe an easier one to fix. This weekend, one of my neighbors thought she heard the woman above her fall, and she heard what she sounded like. The body fell, a walker fell, an effort to get up, couldn't get up, and at that point, she called the management of the apartments, and they did not respond, so she called me. I have education in gerontology, and I have worked for services, taking care of elderly. Protocol when somebody's life is in danger is to call 911, which I directed. I said, "Call 911." When 911 got there, they had to break the door down. Well, actually, they didn't have to, but they thought they did, and they broke the door down, because it had been twenty minutes already. It was like the Three Stooges, really. There are a few things that could have been done to prevent this situation, and I'm here about the third way. There was a lock box at the front door with a key in it. It was not necessary to break the door down, but the fire department did not know that. They should have, but they didn't. The emergency people didn't know. So I would like to see a law throughout the whole city that says in apartment buildings where there are vulnerable children and elderly people, there is a lock box by the front door that makes it possible for emergency responders to get into people's apartments. This might save lives. It certainly would be more efficient. And if it's a citywide law, then all emergency responders are going to know, look for the key. So that's why I'd like it to be a citywide law. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Stacey, you are next, followed by Marina Hayek.
Hi, I'm Jean Stacey, and tonight I'm in Clear's Ward. Tonight I'm addressing more of the media and your constituents to let them understand why so many of you are being so aggressive and trying to work with a difficult situation here with regard to the homeless. Though this particular council and staff are working very hard to improve Eugene's shelter status, you've inherited a very difficult situation. Right now, Eugene has the worst shelter status of any city in the United States above the Fortieth parallel with over a hundred thousand population, in terms of per capita unsheltered portion of its homeless population. In fact, Eugene ranks first worst regarding the percentage of homeless who are sheltered, whereas Portland, by comparison, ranks twentieth worst. So we have a lot of catching up to do as a city. Confirming this dismal failure is the U.S. Mayor's Conference Study on Homelessness in America, which found that the average sixty-six percent of homeless adults in the study communities were sheltered, but that Eugene shelters only twenty-seven percent. This unique local absence of shelter in Eugene is a result not only of decreased HUD funding, which is a national phenomenon, but also by pressure that has been launched locally utilizing myths, such as the idea that we are a Mecca for those who are homeless. A major myth that has been perpetuated is that most homeless people who are not from here, but come here because of our fabulous services. Well, we've already proven that. In fact, Eugene has far less to offer homeless people than most communities. Now we can debunk the myth that our homeless travel to get here. According to HUD and U.S. Census data, we know that seventy-seven percent of Lane County's homeless people had their last house or apartment here in Lane County, and another seven percent come from somewhere in Oregon. The reason we see more homeless here is that in other cities, than in other cities, is because, as we've just seen, in other cities, the homeless have triple the shelters we have, and so they have someplace to go rather than having to try to exist in public spaces and be seen. We commend this council for not falling prey to the prejudice and misinformation that perpetuates these myths, and instead for starting these pilot programs such as Opportunity Village, which provides housing at one percent the cost of HUD, and for the rest stops that you have initiated, and for the steps you're taking to protect Whoville. I think it's very brave behavior at a time that that kind of behavior is needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Marina Hayek is next, followed by Lisa Arkin.
Good evening, dear city council members. My name is Marina Hayek. I live on 2410 Madison Street, and I am here again to advocate for South Willamette Street and the option number three that will provide the bicycle lanes. Since the time that I opened my art studio at 2650 South Willamette, I noticed, and I had mentioned this before, that we needed to revitalize that area. That's why the Second Saturday Art Walk started in 2012, as an attempt to make the South Willamette Street a more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly area. South Willamette Street as it is, it is not a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly street. There are complaints about traffic going well above the speed limit. As the director of the Harmony Roadhouse Music Studios said, Roadhouse, excuse me, South Willamette Street as it is, is now very crazy. The traffic doesn't drive in an orderly manner, especially when one is to make a turning, a left or right turning. South Willamette Street as it is, it is not a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly street. There are complaints about traffic going well above the speed limit. As the director of the Harmony Roadhouse Music Studios said, Roadhouse, excuse me, South Willamette Street as it is, is now very crazy. The traffic doesn't drive in an orderly manner, especially when one wanted to make a turning, a left or right turning. So she also is trying to advocate to add the bicycle lanes to South Willamette, because as owner of the business, she believes that that will provide more safety. And also, when there is talk and concerns about safety, I just want to remind you, the option number three, it will just be, or not make, any difference, South Willamette Street than what 18th Street, 18 Avenue is. Bicycle lanes I ride are just along, next to the traffic. So I have ride the 18th Street, and I have also ridden on 13 and on West 11, and it will be the same case on South Willamette. And I think all the businesses, we should be united in trying to keep the identity and improve South Eugene instead of fighting with each other for this option. I think that what is threatening businesses will be if we allow Fred Mayer to allocate there and bringing other businesses in its shopping center. The population will want just to drive straight down to one destination to do all their shopping instead of having to stop, make different stops in small shops as it is now. So I think we should be joining forces to make a friendly area with South Eugene, not just bicyclists, but pedestrian, and for the good of all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Arkin is next, followed by Carla Herbert.
Good evening, Lisa Arkin. I live and work in Ward One, and thank you, Councilor Brown, for your service. And I want to also thank Mayor Piercy, the whole council, our city manager, and staff, members in parks and open space for taking up the issue of pesticide-free parks. Because this is really a fairness and a health issue at its heart. Recently, I attended grand rounds at Oregon Health Sciences University for OBGYN doctors, a presentation by Dr. Phelps, who is a pediatrician and toxicologist, and he gave a fascinating presentation about critical windows of development during fetal time, and also for young children under the age of three, who even with an infinitesimal amount of pesticide exposure can experience lifelong cognitive disruption and problems with motor development. So even when, before a woman knows she's pregnant, she could be setting up this kind of thing with even small exposures to insecticides or herbicides. The research is so clear now. And many of those doctors are actually doing a sign-on letter to people in the governor's office about reducing pesticide exposures for children. So in Eugene, no parent should have to drive across city to find a park that's safe for a toddler or safe for a pregnant woman. Every neighborhood should have something within walking or biking distance for a family to go and enjoy. Kids can roll on the grass, pick up Cheetos from the grass, chase a ball in the grass, and feel safe. So thank you for taking this up. I also want to let you know that today in the state senate, the Oregon Safe Pollinators Act passed 27 to 2, passed in the House 54 to 4. Huge bipartisan support for protecting our bees and pollinators. I think I'll be part of a governor's task force to continue looking at this issue and bringing it back in 2015. So the part of this bill that takes neonicotinoid pesticides, which are known to harm bees, out of city property is really a right step in the direction. It's happening all over the nation. Eugene will be a leader, but you won't be the only ones. So our state legislator has taken action. The governor will sign the bill. And I just think that, on the city website, it says, in terms of pesticide-free parks and their purpose, it says that pesticide-free parks are a showcase for the many alternative methods that are available to solve pest problems without pesticides. And this will encourage our community to use less of these chemicals. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Carla Herbert.
Hi, my name is Carla Herbert. I live at 2948 Dry Creek Road, that's northwest Eugene. Dear Mayor Piercy and city council members, I'm here tonight asking you to approve the resolution for the pesticide-free parks. As a cardiac and respiratory nurse and human health advocate, I am very deeply concerned about the negative effects toxic pesticides have on the human body, the environment, and our bees. Many pesticides are believed to be endocrine disruptors. Endocrine disruptors are chemicals that at very low doses interfere with the hormonal systems in humans and wildlife. Hormones control and coordinate many of our bodies' functions, especially those related to reproduction and brain chemistry. Endocrine disruptors are linked to fetal deaths, compromised immune systems in children, lower sperm counts, early onset of puberty, and cancer. Cumulative exposure leads to increased incidence of breast and prostate cancer later in life if exposed as a child. Oregon and the Northwest, Washington, we have the highest rates of breast cancer in the country. In Oregon, each week, 47 women are diagnosed with breast cancer, and 10 will die from a disease. Three-quarters of cancers are associated with environmental factors, not genetics, as many of us would like to believe. Thyroid hormone regulates our entire body's activities, including proper brain development. This hormone can be affected by numerous farm chemicals. Attention deficit, hyperactivity disorders, irritability, aggressive behavior are all linked to thyroid hormone levels. 3% to 8% of U.S. children have the above-mentioned disorders. There has been a link between chronic exposure of organophosphates and incidence of childhood asthma, cancer, neurological problems, and developmental disabilities through studies from OHSU. Of 27 of the most commonly-used pesticides, 15 of them have been classified as carcinogens by the EPA. Eight caused pregnancy problems, 15 damaged genes. In 2001, the last year estimates that were made, the U.S. pesticide use exceeded 1.2 billion pounds. Every human being now carries over 150 chemicals in his or her body. Mothers pass on their chemical burden to infants via umbilical cord blood. There's over 200 chemical contaminants found, and in breast milk. Many of these chemicals were banned years ago. So herbicides and pesticides do not stay where they were sprayed. When airily sprayed, they drift into communities and schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and thank everyone, and say congratulations to Beyond Toxics for the, yes, it's great. Hopefully, it'll make a difference in protecting bees, a very important part. And I guess I wanted to say that my, I just appreciate everyone so much, because there isn't anyone who's spoken here tonight that aren't here speaking because they care about the safety and well-being of the people of our community and our state and our nation. So thank you all very, very much. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone's testimony tonight. I particularly appreciate Lisa Arkin and her work. We have on our Wednesday, as the mayor mentioned earlier, an opportunity to talk about the IPM. And I, Mr. Manager, I appreciate all the work that's in the AIS so far, but I, let me step back and say, I'm probably the guy at the table least likely to want to regulate and ban something in general. But I'm about this close to want to ban the use of neonicotinoids in Eugene in total rather than just in our parks. I need more information to be able to make that decision, and I would hope we could have that kind of conversation at some point. I think that may be a stronger step than I'm comfortable making right now, but I'm pretty close, based on what I've learned so far. Can we, can we have more information on that rather than less at our Wednesday work session and maybe beyond?
I don't know how much we'll have at the Wednesday work session. What I do think the conversation in part is, is to get any feedback from the council on if there are places that you want to go with the resolution in that, and then we can incorporate those kinds of things, depending on the direction of the council. So that's part of the purpose of Wednesday's work session.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Okay, we're going to move on with the rest of the meeting. Thank you all again. The next up is a consent calendar. Council President.
Move for approval of the items on the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't see anyone having any issues, so I think we're ready to vote on it. All those in favor, please indicate.
Two, three, seven.
In favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. And then we have one item, action item this evening, and that's an ordinance extending the sunset date of the permitted overnight sleeping. Council President.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5109, extending the sunset date of ordinance number 20517 to October 1, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't see any, yes, Councilor Pauling.
Thank you. Couple of questions real quick. You know, originally, we had set a six-month time period, but because of the delay in getting the second one started, I'm okay with extending the date to end the pilot program. However, I'm a little concerned about extending it all the way till October. I think that's beyond the six-month target that we originally set. So I'm still kind of undecided on what I'm going to do about that, but my bigger concern I have is, at the end of the pilot program, what are we going to do? If we decide to continue it, what is our course of action? If we decide to discontinue it, what is our course of action? This is something that I would like to see come back to us either at the time or before the pilot program ends. Because if we come up to the October 1 date, and we decide, this isn't working, let's end it, how are we going to end it? So that's something that I would like to see. And the other thing is, we have not had any discussion whatsoever on what benchmarks we're using to evaluate whether or not this program's working. So that's something else I think we need to have, either a discussion, or, City Manager, you suggest it, and come back with those points, so we can have a real good conversation about whether the program's working or not. And some of the things that we need to be looking for is like the number of repeat users, I'll get it out. What steps are being made to transition these, the people that are taking advantage of these rest stops into a more permanent situation? And there's some others I, I'll get with you and give you some of the others, but we need to have some sort of matrix to figure out whether or not this is working, because right now, we haven't had that conversation. So, you know, I'm still concerned about the October date. I probably don't have enough votes up here at the table to change that, but I think that it's important that we actually have the end of the pilot period closer to the start of our summer break. Because come October 1, we're going to be heading into cold weather, and we're going to get people saying, oh, well, we're going into cold weather, the pilot program you've decided doesn't work, but now what are you going to do with these people? So we can't, you know, I'm just not comfortable with that October 1 date, but I know by counting the heads at the table that I'm not going to be able to change that. So just some concerns that I've got.
City Manager.
I can probably address a couple of things. One is when the, with respect to benchmarks, when the pilot program was actually set up, we did have some conversation about how we would evaluate those, and it was primarily around public health and public safety. And so if there are some additional things that council would like us to take a look at, we should have that conversation. The intent of the rest stop, at least as council has talked about it so far, wasn't necessarily around the success in transitioning or not transitioning people to someplace else. So if that is something that's important as you evaluate, we should have that conversation. But we will be taking a look at public health and public safety, and as we move through that. I agree with you that when we, when we get to October 1, if this passes, that we will be back to council ahead of that to talk about what would you want to do come October 1. Extend, not extend, amend, change, whatever that is. And we would want to come ahead of time, so you had enough time to do something, put that in place, and then be able to implement that, depending on what you want to do. So that is our intent, which means that conversation will likely start at least as soon as you get back from your summer break, or even potentially a little ahead of time, I'm not sure yet. We'll just kind of back into that. The October 1 date, of course, is there to mirror the Opportunity Village date, and that's why last time in this conversation, it looked like the majority of the council said, let's match that to whatever that particular date was. And that also will then come up for evaluation at the same time, and so they're all coming back to you in time to make some decision to impact the October 1 date.
Councilor Clark, did you have, I'm sorry, Councilor Pauling, you have anything more you wanted to?
Yeah, but I won't have time to do it in four seconds.
Okay. Councilor Clark.
No, 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 I was saying, no, he covered all my bases, and I'll cede my time to him if you'll let.
No, we don't do that.
Another round, though.
You want another round?
Yeah.
See, there you go.
You know, I think the whole principle of what the city of Eugene can do for the homeless people is to help them transition into a more permanent situation, more permanent housing, and not to warehouse them in rest stops and illegal campgrounds. So that's why I wanted the information as to the number of people that have taken advantage of these rest stops, which to me, aren't really rest stops or campgrounds, to see how many of these people have taken advantage of that situation to get more stabilized, to move into a more stabilized housing. So that's why I want that kind of information. And, you know, another information I'd like to have, and I know that it wasn't done at Opportunity Village, is I would like to get a real good sense of the number of people that are using these facilities that are truly the city of Eugene homeless. Again, I'm going to reference the article about the first Conestoga hut at the St. Vincent de Paul, car camping program, went to a man that bragged about being homeless for 17 years, and had just recently moved to Portland, and then from Portland to Eugene, and was in Eugene less than, I think, three months. And he got the first Conestoga hut at one of our car camping sites. You know, to me, those type of things need to go to the truly Eugene residents or Lane County resident homeless, not people that brag about being homeless for 17 years. So that's why I'm interested in that kind of information.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. It's sometimes hard to have conversations out loud about uncomfortable truths. I think that it should be the goal of the council that those folks who are homeless, who are living in this fashion, our chief focus is how to help them not be living that way. But I think before we get to the place where that even can be our goal, we have to be comfortable saying, it's not okay to live that way if you can help it. It's not okay to live that way if we can help you do something different or better. We, as a council, feel entirely comfortable telling people how they can and can't buy their groceries and what they can put them in. We had a conversation earlier where we feel entirely comfortable telling people how they will and won't manage the employees and their business. But we're not willing to say, it's cold outside, and it's dangerous for people to live that way, and we want to do everything we can to help them stop doing it. But the first part of that is admitting that it's not a good idea to live that way. Thank you.
So what I want to say, kind of in response to that and resisting response to that, is that I think what we could agree on is that we need to have some agreement at council for our sake and for the community's sake, and for those who are residing in the rest stops or in Opportunity Village about what it is we have set as a goal. If the goal is, as I think it is, that there's a place that people can sleep from dusk to dawn without being in any danger from any interruption or having a run amok of the law enforcement, then I think that's kind of the narrow parameter that we approach that with. If it's a broader parameter, then I think we need to let people
If it's a broader parameter, then I think we need to let people know, because it won't help us to have different expectations than we've actually set out there. So we have to be honest to ourselves, and honest to the community, and honest to the people that are there about what it is we're trying to do and how we'll measure what success is or isn't. And we've taken kind of, in some senses, kind of a limited approach with both Opportunity Village and the rest stops, which is to say, we will provide the land, and then you really need to step up and do the rest of the partnership, and they have. And so if we're going to do something different than that, which I hope we will, which is to move on to some more permanent solutions for people where really we don't have to rely very much on these, no situations where people don't have electricity or plumbing or some of the basic things of life, that we really want people to be able to move forward in their lives, and we're willing to aim in that direction and put some energy behind that. I'm, I think, I can't think of anybody on this council that wouldn't support, that is how we do it, we might have some disagreements about, but I'm looking forward to that discussion. I think it's a very important discussion, and I think most of the community thinks it's a very important discussion. Rest stops aren't the answer, they're just what we're doing to deal with a situation to give people a little bit of safety in the midst of a very difficult situation. But I think we can do better, and we should do better, and that's what we're going to aim for. So that's, we got a couple of conversations. What are we expecting out of these two pilots? How do we actually say it works or doesn't work? And the second one is, what are we really going to do so that we don't have people with those same needs year after year after year? And I'm with you on that one totally. So I think.
Council Evans? Council Evans? I'm going to beat the dead horse again. You know, homelessness is not a black and white issue. Homelessness is an extremely complex issue, and a number of the people that we are talking about that are homeless in our city and the conditions that they're in, in a chronic sense, also have chronic issues, whether it's mental health issues, alcohol and drug issues, or actual physical health issues. There are people who are, have fallen down, and they can't get back up because they have no other means to do so. Now, we, as jurisdiction, this is not our capacity to be able to address. What we are doing is doing the best that we can do with what we have to do, deal with. When we talk about transition, councilor polling, we have forgot to talk about transition with the county, because they have the staff. They may not have all the resources that they need, but a collaborative effort with the human services. Part of this is critical. Otherwise, we are going to continue to be here in 2015, 2016, talking about the same thing without having made any significant progress in terms of addressing the issue and helping people to transition to self-sufficiency, which I think is the goal of everybody here on this dais, as well as people in the community. I don't, I've not heard anybody, you know, say to me, at least to my face anyway, the, you know, we just want to, you know, throw these people away. What we want to do is we want to do what is the right thing to do, and again, we have to have the county step in to do the work that they are not only charged to do, but have the professional and technical expertise to execute.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. So, did we put it on the table already? Yep. All right, so all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, and six, and seven?
Seven.
Seven in favor and none in opposition. Okay, with that, good night.